I'm calling to order, let's start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, yeah, everybody's mic'd up, right? Number three, approval of the agenda.
Someone.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. 3.1 additions, that would fall under it, right Deb? We just approved everything?
Yes, yep.
Uh, number four, public forum.
None.
Number five, presentation, 5.1, National Honor Society students.
Hi, my name is Carter Bull.
Hi, I'm Kyla Backlund.
And I'm Kira Potchitz.
Unveiled over a century ago, the National Honor Society trines four pillars at its heart: scholarship, service, leadership, and character. More than mere badges of honor for NHS members, these principles are transformative keys that unlock potential, enhancing every student's educational journey and ultimately empowering them to make profound enduring contributions to our world.
First up, scholarship. Scholarship is more than just a report card. It represents a dedicated commitment to a lifelong learning. It's about optimizing the educational opportunities offered and pursuing knowledge within the beyond academic confines. Scholarship necessitates a consistent effort with an aspiration to contribute positively to the world through one's knowledge, skills, and experiences. Some examples of scholarship for our chapter include a required GPA of 3.5 and excellent academic performance in all of our classes. Service represents the choice of stepping outside oneself to meet the needs of others. Fueled by an unwavering passion for cause, heartfelt empathy for others, or driven by personal circumstances, it's about performing selfless acts that transcend the ordinary, engendering transformative changes that resonate through our schools, ripple across our communities, and reverberate on a global scale. In the noble act of service, we sculpt a better world with our hands, our hearts, and our community. Our chapter demonstrates service by requiring each member to complete 20 hours of volunteer service along with completing several service projects like a clothing drive, filling backpacks for the food program, and cleaning teachers' desks, helping the athletic booster club sell food, working concession stands during events, and sending Christmas cards to nursing homes and assisted living.
Leadership is more than a position or title. It means embodying the spirit of initiative, innovation, and influence. It's about inspiring peers through actions, nurturing a collaborative environment, and championing positive change. Student-led leaders embrace the responsibility of shaping their academic community, all while fostering personal growth and development. It's an interplay of intellect, empathy, and resilience, guiding others while continually learning and evolving.
Members of our chapter demonstrate leadership by how they act when they are around their peers, whether they are in school or not. They make the right choice even when no one is watching, and they demand the same type of behavior from their friends and classmates.
Next pillar is character. Character is the essence of who we are. It's about valuing diversity, building relationships grounded in empathy, and exhibiting qualities like perseverance, respect, integrity, and honesty. Character lies not in public acts of virtue or visible mistakes, but in a consistent commitment to ethical and compassionate decision-making that positively affects both oneself and others. For our members, character is shown by the kindness we extend to others, the way we treat everyone that is part of our school and community, and the respect that we give to classmates, teachers, coaches, support staff, and our parents.
We are here tonight as current members of the Pipestone National Honor Society to extend an invitation to our 2024 induction ceremony on Sunday, May 5th, 2024, when 15 new members of the junior class will be inducted into our chapter.
Thank you for your time tonight and your dedication to Pipestone Area Schools.
Thank you.
Congratulations on being on the National Honor Society. That's very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Fenwick, for your leadership.
And Mrs. Siles.
Oh, and Mrs. Siles too, yes, of course. Thank you.
Number six, consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Someone.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. Number seven, financials. 7.1, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie.
Okay, budget year-to-date, we're at 69%. Last year at this time, we're at 69%, so that makes me feel good. Consistently right, consistently wrong. Are there any questions?
So we're consistently right, really?
7.2, approved treasures report for March.
Hey, our cash balance is currently at 8.6 million, which is good. Pretty nice amount of interest on the investments. We have a lot to say about this.
Okay, you get a motion to approve the treasure report for March.
Someone, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. 7.3, approved 2023 A Bonds Treasures Report for March.
Current cash balance in the bond fund at the end of March would be $2.8 million.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Someone, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. 7.4, approved regular bills for April.
I have a question about something that came up. Are we still, we're still not using charters unless, because even if we need two buses, it's still cheaper than a charter, right, for busing?
Two yellow buses are cheaper than a charter.
Correct. Okay, so if they're using charters, that means they're paying for that out of their own fundage?
They're paying for the difference.
Difference, right.
High school activity fund and reimbursing the general fund for the difference.
Okay. Per sport, like per...
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay, that's all.
Unless it's a trip that is wanting a charter, like a long distance away or something.
Like they're going up to the metro or they have a beta point because that's where they can get along and the distance.
Right, okay.
I know Kira already just gave me a list of what had to come out of the high school activity fund for each sport, to read worth the general fund, for what we expect.
And I believe Rick is working on putting together a final report that'll show the charters, costly yellow school bus, the upgrade cost, where those dollars came from, to cover that cost, etc.
And who covered it then? I think you will be, clarification process.
I would agree, because there's questions about what's getting it and what's not.
Why are they getting it?
Yes.
Yep, I agree with you. Okay, it's good clarification. I have a question, but mine was on how we pay, how we pay officials at games? Is that, do we set it? Does someone set it? And I guess I, going through, looking at it, I noticed some of the, some of them are more than others, some of them are less. There's no consistency.
Do you know how it's billed, Jackie? All I know is that Rick told her it was the requisition to Harold if she pays.
Okay.
When I thought it, doesn't it go through a system of, like, don't you put out your games and then the officials take it?
Sometimes they have their own price.
And then they, and it depends.
That would be the discrepancy.
And I wonder if it's how many years, you know, like I suppose it's just like anything else, maybe.
I just.
Yeah.
I have information, Rick, with that.
Yeah, but I do think it's a.
Yeah, it's just when I was looking through it, they, you know, some of them were, some of them were like rubber stamps and then there were some that were.
Up and down. Well, and when I've done it for volleyball, it's different at every school. And so, and I've never set my own price, ever.
It's whatever they.
It's what the school pays, but it's different per sport.
I'll talk to Rick. I just noticed there was some fluctuation.
Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills for April?
Someone.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills for April. Any questions? Can I see anything? Can I get a motion to approve high school activity bills for April?
Someone, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. Great. Board forum information, 8.1, board reports and updates. Been any committee meetings?
I have none.
No.
I don't think so.
Well, because it's been so short since the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only been three weeks. Yeah, and I do know I handed to Brad this evening that we've been notified to start negotiations with another bargaining group, so that is something that the board negotiation committee will, will want to get together and talk about, but that was just handed to me and I've now passed it on to Brad, so that was handed to me on April 16th, so just put that on your radar as part of the forum discussion.
Moving on, anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, number nine, administrative report, 9.1, superintendent's board report.
So, just a few items that I really wanted to take some time to highlight that you see later on in the agenda. We have the service agreement with Tremco that has been reviewed by council and it's perfectly okay because it's similar to a service agreement with an architectural firm, so that process will, by approving that, that'll initiate the process to move forward with the assessments of our roofs, which is clearly needed. I've had people from the high school office, and I've been over to the high school office looking at secretaries being displaced and buckets getting sent around just because of what's going on with the water penetration into the roof, so we're really concerned and excited to get that project moving forward. We are still working hard on filling vacancies moving forward as quickly as we can with those. Legislative action, a couple of big things that we're watching, there's some REDACT, they're calling it REDACT 2.0, there might be some additional resources and some timelines extended, albeit briefly, to implement REDACT pieces. Another part of that though is also the expansion of the REDACT into the middle school and high school, so there'll be some required trainings for staff, middle school, high school is what it's sounding like, so again, we'll have to watch what comes out of the final budget bill and policy bill from the state legislature, so those are things we're keeping track of. The district did apply for a grant, it was up to $500,000, so I don't have a timeline of when that might come, but the opportunity is, it's called Closing Educational Opportunities Grant. It's a grant that obviously fits our district really, really well. When I shared it with our administrators, we got pretty excited about the opportunity because of some of the achievement gaps that we've identified through our assessment results, and it would give us an opportunity to do some things to impact the learning opportunities particularly for our at-risk and low-income students. And one of the things that we would look at doing in there is thinking about our strategic plan, we're getting to the sunset of our strategic plan, and I would like to think about that, start board members as a backward design, where we're thinking about what is the profile of graduate from Pipestone Area Schools? What do we want them to know and expect them to do, and then how do we design our system accordingly? So that would be part of this grant funding to help us support that. So fingers crossed that hopefully we're a successful grant recipient, but time will certainly tell. Started having some conversations about mapping out what our priorities will be this summer, and we are working on the buildings and grounds. We've interviewed a couple of individuals and I hopefully can make a decision relatively soon on somebody to fill that director of buildings and grounds position. And then the other thing that I did not get written into my report, but I wanted to bring to the board's attention that we're going to be working on a solution, is Riley, who helps out with our technology services, is on a 260-day contract. He works through the summer and everything, but he's hired as a tech para, and that means he doesn't get some of the other benefit opportunities like a vacation day or something like that that a 260-day employee would, so I just want to make the board aware that I'm working on that with Jackie and with Josh to bring forward a different work agreement and assignment with him. I anticipate bringing that forward to the next meeting so that we can give him the benefits that he rightfully should have for the amount of time that he's putting in the district. So just, again, beware, but that's something we're working on and ideally we'll have a solution sooner than later with that. And then I'll just close out by saying we had a meet and confer for the master agreement prior to this meeting this evening. It was expressed, the appreciation of the board members, so I wanted to share this, and Brad and Daphne can echo this as well because they were part of the meet and confer, but we've integrated the Payton Work Day for special education teachers and they have just said how much that is truly appreciated and everything that we're doing, so I wanted to make certain the board members hear that, because oftentimes you don't hear those positive things, so that was really appreciated and extended, and I just want to thank the teachers for their willingness to work through that with us and get that taken care of too. So those are the things I wanted to highlight this evening.
Two questions. Do we have anything lined up for repairs of the roof? And I guess the second question, part of that, I'm asking that because I think the replacement will start until 2025.
Right, yeah. And then that's where I am going to live it with them about repairs.
Like band-aid?
Yep, and because as we know, Tremco came out when they did the inspection, when they did the inspection last time for us, they did some minor repairs for us, and I envision that they would do the same thing again this summer just to get us through because of what we're seeing, like I said, in particular around that high school office area, and that's really concerning because that has a lot of technology and obviously a hub of activity, and that's the front porch of our school in a lot of ways.
And that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, so that was the intent that after we make the approval tonight, that I would follow up with them and initiate that process.
I had to bring something out for Cassie when we could go, and Sonia took me back and showed me, and it's like, you know, we're gonna have to band-aid or something, or we're gonna wreck what we have, even in 12 months.
It's not good.
No.
It's pretty bad.
Well, and that's all pretty familiar, huh?
Exactly, exactly. And there was an investment made there, not that long ago, right?
No, when the elementary was built.
So that's one of my questions.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything for Dr. Willard? Okay, moving on to 9.2, principals' board report.
Good evening. Not much for me. We had our last Trickle Kids program on April 2nd. I would love that when the meeting comes in. We start MCA testing starting tomorrow. I'm working on interviewing some candidates for our open positions. Last week was a really fun week. We had book fair going on, so the whole elementary front office was full of books. And then last Tuesday, we had the book fair going on as well as our art show, the outer space. You got a chance to walk through that, that was incredible. And then in the gym, we had some family engagement stuff going on. So, yeah, we got a lot of upcoming field trips and a couple of them right now, and then May is the jam packed with black and white. What's about May?
Chris.
Okay, we are also working on our standardized testing this week and next in the high school. We had to kind of switch some things around. We have noticed that at the high school level, we've got two grades that are e-learning on Wednesday, and that is because grades 10 and 11 are testing, 9 and 12 are not. Sometimes we have taken those kids out of the building to go on a field trip or college visit. We have so many students that need a small grouping during that MCA test that we need all hands on deck, so that's kind of why we made that decision. We'll figure something different out next year for like the spacing out of the test. I think, I think I can do it with everybody in the building without having to have an e-learning game, but that's what we're planning for on Wednesday. We took the ACT, we administered, facilitated the ACT test on the 9th of April. Typically, the school has one with paper, pencil, and the old holes, and the booklets, and I can get those ordered in time because I didn't know. So when I called, they said, you sure can test, but you're gonna have to do it online, and so we just went with it, and the kids, I think, did well because they're used to working on their computers anyway. They're used to typing and, and, you know, clicking next instead of, you know, using a pencil, and that's pretty old school, so I did it, but, so that went well. We don't have our sports yet. We've got prom coming up this Saturday, which is my favorite holiday of the year. We've got senior privileges in full swing. Our students are really appreciating that little VIP treatment at the end of the quarter here. I have a couple of high school openings and a couple of middle school openings that have not filled yet, but we are working hard. We have one position filled, and we're just trying to find like those best candidates. We really want the best for the school. We are in the final stages of our seventh period day. I'm meeting with my leadership teams on Wednesday to kind of finalize it and get it, and get it ready to go. Dr. Willard and Mrs. Morabes and I attended a leadership conference in Minneapolis to kind of launch us into that continuous school improvement process, and so that was awesome.
Any questions for me?
I had some, some, a couple of parents contact me that the timing wasn't correct on the ACT testing and some of the students weren't able to finish their writing part.
Yes, there were, there were two students that were still working. I was reading the directions all right off of the screen. It tells you exactly what to say. So you have 40 minutes to take the test, it said, and then you will be granted an additional amount of time. And so I read that, and then we go to it, it stops, and it then tells me that I don't have anybody that qualifies for the extra time, so it would have been somebody with accommodations, so.
Okay, I was under the impression there's more than two students that weren't done. So they were concerned at why they, that their student thought they had more time than they did?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there any way for them to take that portion of the test without paying for it again, or having to pay for it?
Um, I'm, yeah, I think we can figure that out. It's just, it's just a mini test.
Yeah, that's what they said, it was the extra, where it adds extra points if.
Yep, like a super test.
Okay. I guess I think if we weren't administering the test correctly, we should give those students a chance to retake that portion of the test, just because an ACT test is a pretty big deal. And it can, you know, be a big difference with scholarships sometimes, getting into school sometimes, a lot of different things. So I feel like if it was us not knowing or not reading directions correctly, we probably should make sure that those students could take it without paying for it.
Send them to, send them to my office.
Well, if there was, whether, I'm sure there's more than just those two, though. They're the only two that.
There were two students that were like waiting to still continue.
I would say, I guess my thought would be that we should contact them and just tell them.
Class.
Or well, or, yeah, whatever, anybody that didn't have a chance to finish their ACTs.
We can talk about it, and, yeah, I completely agree because if it's something that happened and occurred as a result of our action, we need to make it right.
Right, and I don't want people to have to pay for a test that.
Yep.
It should, yeah, so, I would appreciate that.
Take care of that, you bet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Number 10, discussion items. I assume that we don't have any discussion items.
Yeah.
Okay, number 11, board action. 11.1, resolution accepting donations to high school activities. I'd like to, I'd like to thank Pipestone Publishing Company for the donation of $1,345 for the athletic help fund. Can I get a motion to approve?
Someone.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes.
Can I, can I ask how, like, what falls under the athletic help fund? Because I know it used to be for like paying for the sports fee or whatever, so is there, is there something pushed out that parents are aware this is available for kids, or is it?
Maybe not aware of the process, but that's something I can sort of.
I guess I was always under the understanding it was so you could use sports, so yeah, then.
But I know it's been used for like physicals and shoes or whatever else, but I don't know that people really know that that's available, because when it was given before, it was kind of the reaction, I don't want to get no better.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Who's in charge of that? Who takes care of it?
You know what I.
Rick, or?
Yes, it is, right. They're gonna take some of the help fund, we have to have a signed requisition from Rick.
Okay, so he's kind of in charge of it.
I think he works with the coaches to identify who might need the support and assistance, and then from there, follows requisition process in the district.
That'd make a good line.
Okay.
He can communicate that easily.
Right.
Do you got a radio show tomorrow?
There you go, live on the air, anyway.
Okay, 11.2, resolution approving donations to the school. We have three of them. First is Christ the King Lutheran for $200 to the Lomax Room. Second is the Elementary Booster Club of $2,278.15 for the donation for playground equipment.
Is that newer, is that for new equipment? I was gonna ask that, actually.
There's a list on there, the invoice is on there. No, it's, it's not, it's just playground equipment. It's not the playground structure.
Oh, it's like just stuff out to take outside?
Right, like balls. I just made that up, but it's on the invoice.
I made that up, exactly.
Things you love to hear your business manager say. Kind of please do not repeat that.
There, I don't see, there's a lot of balls. They did a volleyball net that hasn't got up yet, but they're probably on that too.
I gotta be a voice on there, see.
Did you hide it?
Here.
It's not, yes, it's the Christ the King, then it's the Elementary Booster Club. It's the third one. A volleyball net, plastic disc, rainbow hoops, rainbow power tech volleyball, rainbow volleyball bean bags, and a rainbow colored, and rainbow colored coated equipment.
Perfect. I was just wondering if that's the mineral or what.
And then the third one, from the Joe Dowdy family, $22,296 for the new scoreboard out at the softball field. I'd like to thank all four of these groups for these donations. It's incredible, it's a lot of money. Can I get a motion to approve the donations to the school?
And I think that the dedication for the scoreboard is coming up, right? Is that, what did someone tell me that was? I gotta remember, I gotta look that up, but it is, they're gonna have a dedication. Yeah, I, someone told me I can't remember, I want to say it's me, I don't want to say it again.
So moved, can I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes. 11.3, approve 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 school calendars. Any comment?
We had just asked for feedback, and I think there was kind of mixed reviews about messing with the graduation date, so figured this year we'll spend some more time studying, get some more feedback, just because we don't want to make a hasty decision and, again, not having everybody on board with the. And with the kind of mixed feedback that we've received, I think we just need a little more time on that one. So that is not reflected as a change in, in the 2024, 25 calendar or the following calendar. But we know that we'll be revisiting that calendar when we get into the cadence next year. The other thing I'd like to point out in particular is August. We had a little discussion prior to the meeting. August 26th, that Monday, is not a workday for staff. And that's because as the schedule falls, we had, we were short one student contact day. So we had to add a student contact day in. Well, then that made it long one staff day, so we had to take away a staff day to balance out all the requirements that we have within our master agreement for our staff contact time and our staff, staff development time as well. So you can see that our, our new teacher and in-service days are the 19th and 20th and then back to school for all staff, 27th, 28th, and 29th. So again, board members, you can start marking your calendars pending this being approved for you to attend those days and one of those days there and for welcome back. But overall, I thought this was a really productive process. For those that, Daphne and Chrissy sat in on the calendar committee. I had great feedback from staff saying that they felt it was really a collegial discussion and walked out of there feeling really positive about the result that we see before us. So that's what we have.
Questions?
So it's not changed on either calendar though?
It is. I changed it on the 24, 25.
Which one?
No, the graduation.
Yeah, it's not changed on either one.
Either one, okay.
Because we'll use next year to study and then make an adjustment when we get into the 25, 26 calendar.
Yeah, I think they need to be really careful with that because people book them out like five years.
They plan.
Well, they do between the high wackalot and the country club and because you can't, there's only so many days that you can have. I know people that have them for three years. I mean, when it's over. I know, well, if you want to use something like that, you better because.
Daphne's favorite stress over here.
There it is. Pretty good.
Can I get a motion to approve school calendars?
Some moves.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point four, Approve Proposal to Complete Maintenance Overlay on Track.
I'll just address it real quick. Midwest Tennyson Track. This is something that Rick has spoken to the board about before. And as you can see, we received a proposal which would identify the scope of work, the work that is to be done and lays out what the cost to do that work is. And as we discussed at our last meeting, the bulk of the funds would be allocated towards the roofing project with the identified need to do a maintenance code over the track. And after having visited with the folks from Midwest Tennyson Track, they thought that this would get us through probably four or five years. And based upon the core borings that were done on the track, we know that that coincides with the subsurface of the track and what was identified as a potential need there. So again, this does move the issue of needing to fully replace the track down the road, probably four or five years. So it's not odd of sight, out of mind. It's just putting this temporary solution in place to give us the opportunity to keep the track adhering as it needs to for the competitions that we'll host over the next 60 months roughly. But it starts to clock with coming up with a plan as a district on how we plan to do a full track replacement, which we know that's a pretty expensive project. But again, this buys us a little time and an opportunity to plan for that. And the cost for the, for everybody to know, it's $71,576 is the anticipated cost that has been laid out. And I say anticipated because if there are any changes in cost of materials, that certainly could change as well. But that is what the quote is that we have right now. And there is a clause in here about increase in material pricing.
Any questions? Proposal for the track overlay?
If we, when do they, when would they start if we didn't?
The intent would be to get on their schedule so they can do it yet this fall.
Okay.
And we'd be ready to start the season.
It's going to fall even more until spring, right before the first season.
No, because you, you want to have the warm temperatures yet to fall for a teddy bear.
Spring wouldn't get that to do it.
I asked the very same question. Those elements of the winter time.
Right, get an extra six months out.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Can I motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point five, Approve Services Agreement with Tremco for Middle School, High School Roof Project.
We've discussed this before and this service agreement allows them to act as effectively our project manager and designer for the, for the roof. And as they shared with us, they would come through and do an assessment of the roof this summer and start the bid process then accordingly after that. Prioritize the areas of the roof and the original presentation that they had with the facility subcommittee. They did some, some scheduling out of four years roughly to complete the roof. Well, now with the change in, and pivot by our district in terms of how we're going to solve this, they think that we can do bigger chunks of the roof and it should help impact price and give us a more favorable price because then they're not mobilizing the crew so many times. So once that assessment is done this summer, we'll have a roadmap and move forward. But again, this service agreement just puts us in place to work with Tremco as, like I said, effectively project manager and architect with the design and, and work that needs to be done. So recommend approval of this simply because I think it gets things moving and helps us get that project timeline, as you see on page two of the agreement, rolling. And you see that would start a pre-bid meeting as early as September 2024.
So why would you not move ahead and try to do as much as you can? We have the funding, we have.
That would be the intent.
Okay, that you're thinking of, just before we get ahead of this game so we're not filling buckets.
Exactly, exactly.
My, my only question would be, by approving this, there's no dollar going attached.
No, there's no dollar.
And there's no scale to the work. We still, we still can, if we have to pick and choose based on cash available.
And priority.
And priority.
Exactly.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the services from Tremco.
Some moves.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Twelve. Can I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes.